Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission for October 8th, 2024. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Groth?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. One Commissioner absence, that would be Tobin DeVry. I'd like to call for a moment of silence, or any recommendations from the dais for a moment of silence. And perhaps not your favorite team today, but we should probably say a few moments of silence for our brothers and sisters in Florida. A lot of us have relatives down there and friends, and Godspeed, I hope they're all safe at the end of the week. So a moment of silence, please. Now is the time for public comments. Before we go to public comments, you're probably all wondering why we're all showing our allegiance to a particular team. We all, I think, are hoping that the Tigers win. They won last night.
Yep.
One for one, and they're home now.
Yep.
So I'm looking at Jack as he follows it closely.
Next two days.
Next two days is the day.
Hopefully, they don't play Saturday.
Very well. We have, I know, a couple guests here tonight. We have a candidate for the County Commission, District 6. I recognize we're not in District 6, but it is adjacent to the city of Hudsonville, and I welcome Michelle to come and speak to us and maybe give us a little bit of introduction.
Hi, everybody, I'm Michelle. Dealmen, I am running for District 6 County Commission. And you're right, the city of Hudsonville is not District 6, but I'm finding out a lot, a lot of Zico is Hudsonville. I've been spending a lot of time knocking on Hudsonville doors in the last three weeks, and it's been a pleasure. A little bit about myself, I've worked here four years, done, had, run a small business for 35. I was sitting, watching you guys, and I was thinking, you know, about talking about my work. Why my work? And I'm wanting because it would be lovely if at the county level, we could bring this kind of courtesy, decorum, kindness, and respect to the county. Then you guys show each other, honestly, and kind of almost be together. To come here and see this is much different than what we see at the county level, and I would certainly like to be a part of bringing that back. Mayor Mark met with me a few weeks ago and graciously supported me and endorsed me in a time that's not real cool for people to go across political lines and endorse somebody at the expense of politics. We had a nice conversation about why that was, and so I want to just talk just briefly, and I won't waste your time more than this, that the County Commission is really, it's, we all do a public service, you guys do a public service, this is about public service. It's so much less about politics than it is about, yeah, less about politics and more about public service. We do so little along party lines, and so so many people are hesitant to cross party lines to endorse somebody they think is more qualified. That's certainly been true for me. So I appreciate that so much. As we met, we realized how much we have in common. We really just want what's best for the county. So although many of you probably aren't in District 6, if you know people who are, as I go around Hudsonville and introduce myself, I just wanted to come here and also introduce myself, I will definitely represent District 6 far more than I would represent, I don't know, Impact or anything that has to do with that. So thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Now I'm going to go see my grandbabies, so forgive me for leaving quickly.
State Representative Brad Slaw, I see you in the audience. I assume you want to address us. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me to be here for a few minutes. I thought I would give you just kind of a quick overview of some things that go on in the financing area and through the House. First of all, I don't know, you may have seen some news releases related to the corrections department for the state of Michigan. We were short about a thousand correction officers across the state. There's 27 prisons that we have right now, and we're a thousand officers short. What that's created is a whole bunch of concerns for folks that are doing the work, because obviously, if you're short that many, that means that you're getting called in for overtime, that means you're getting called in to do double shifts in a day, all kinds of things. And it's created some problems with the inmates, because people that have been there two shifts in a row are short of people, and so that creates other kinds of problems. So we're hoping to try and continue to work on getting people hired. But in the climate that we have right now, getting more help is just the top thing to do, no matter what job it is. The other thing that you may have heard is that the corrections department had contracted with a company called Grand Prairie to do a whole bunch of things, medical things, food things, all that kind of stuff, and Grand Prairie takes care of all of that for the whole prison system. Well, they came to a place where they, Grand Prairie is now left, we've hired somebody new, the corrections department has hired somebody new, and, but Grand Prairie shorted their vendors by $30 million across the state. And so the corrections department is actually filing suit against Grand Prairie to try to get the money, because they were paid, Grand Prairie was paid, but they never paid their vendors. So we've got some problems that we're trying to work out. September 25th was the first time that we met since early June as a house. We actually voted on 33 pieces of legislation on that day. Several that I thought would be interesting to you folks, one is, we actually passed, and the Senate has passed, a doubling of the death benefit for public service officers. So the state had paid $25,000 toward, to the family of a fallen, somebody who was a public safety officer died in duty. And that is now going to be shipped $50,000, I don't know if they'll ever sign it yet, but it will happen soon. And then the other one that I thought you'd be interested in was the, that it was House Bill Number 5583, which allows the Secretary of State to file a lawsuit in Ingham County for a campaign finance charge. So if somebody has potentially done something wrong with their campaign finance or being elected, it could be filed, the lawsuit would be filed by Secretary of State in the Ingham County only, rather than filing it in the county that the people are from. So you could be in a county, do something wrong, now you're going to have to go to Ingham County to try and work through that. And Ingham County is a very, very liberal judicial group, and so obviously, if you're there and you're, depending on what your party affiliation, you may not get as, I guess, as fair a feeling. And then, I'm sure that most of you are aware, Hudsonville Chamber recently put out a training event for the business community, and that training event was related to the paid sick time and the minimum wage. And for those of you that haven't spent your time looking at it, I think you definitely need to do that. Our business community is going to suffer for that, and I think our population as well. So we'd encourage you to get a hold of, I think they actually did a, they filmed that training that was done through the Hudsonville Chamber. If you would like to take a look at that. Thank you very much.
It's nice to see you, Brad, and thank you for the update. City Manager, do we have access to that video? Do you know?
I'm not so sure.
Brad, if you get a chance, could you just forward that to me so I can send it on to the Commissioners?
Sure.
Thank you, Brad. I believe our Treasurer, Andrew Smith, has a special guest you'd like to introduce to us?
Yeah, my wife Maggie came, along with our exchange student, Sadia, from Pakistan. So they're going to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the exchange program that they're with.
Hi, everyone, I think you, most of us have met. I'm Maggie, and this is Sadia. She comes from Pakistan, and she, we found out about this awesome program that was developed after 9/11 to promote diplomacy between the United States and Muslim-majority nations. So it's a program through the State Department, and these kids that get, that come through this program earn scholarships to come to the United States. So these students are not coming based on their family's financial situation. They have earned these scholarships 100% themselves. They've done work for a year and a half to two years or more to get the scholarship that they earned. They're in the top 2% to 3% academically in their countries. And I think just in Pakistan alone, there were 7,000 applicants, and I believe 35 made the cut. And one is staying here with us now, and she is pretty awesome. We have had her in our lives for...
Two months.
Two months and two days, that's what's counting. But it's been so fun, and it's just an awesome way for our family to learn more about Pakistan, about Islam, about just the world. The world has come into our home in a way that we do not get traveling, or even, I mean, we lived in Thailand for four years, and I feel like in two months, we've learned more about Pakistan than we learned in four years living in another country. So I will let Sadia introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her. She's a cool gal. You see her around town, stop her and ask her questions. She's so open, and she will talk to you about anything, so. Your turn.
Hi, my name is Sadia Akra, and I'm an exchange student. I'm going to be honest, I'm really nervous, but still, I'm talking. I am the youngest of my seven siblings, like I'm a baby, and when I came here, they said that they'd rob my mother's nest, because I'm a baby, that's fine. And I've worked one and a half years for the scholarship. I went up to my captaincy for, I think, 15 times to pass many of these tests. So it was, it has been a long journey till here, and I'm really grateful to both of them that they've hosted me, and I love being around those people. I would be, it would be really great of you guys if you hosted soon next year, because I'm telling you, these, like, I'm telling you, because I think my friends that I passed the test with, they are all great, they're super great. They, you guys will have a lot of fun with, and you can learn a lot about this, because my father is Islamic scholar, and many Americans think that an Islamic scholar would never let their kids, or like, their children go that far, but it's always in a way. I'm the youngest, and even my sister, she came on the scholarship two years back, and she learned a lot of things here. So it, it's like, it's just stereotypes that people have that we have to change. So that's what I'm here for, asking questions of them, asking them as much as they can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just hats off to you. There's a lot of healing that needs to happen in the world, particularly in the bigotry around the Islam faith and the Christian faith and Jewish faith, and that healing, quite frankly, needs to happen in our hearts at the local level. So congratulations. It won't always be easy, I'm sure, but America is a kind place, and we welcome you with open arms, and hopefully you can go back to your country and tell them that we can be your friends too. Anybody else from the audience who would choose to address the dais? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are six: Commission regular session of September 10th, Commission work session of September 24th, the downtown development authority meeting dated September 4th, election commission meeting minutes of September 10th, planning commission of September 18th, and the Terrace Square Advisory Board dated September 25th. Are there any comments about those minutes or changes identified by the Commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The consent agenda items carry. Moving on to new business public safety, September public safety statistical reports led by Chief.
For the month of September, we ran 57 calls per service. That brings our annual total to 546. If you look at the calls with note, we did have one structure fire, we assisted Jamestown at their apartments. It was an oven fire that kind of spread into the cabinets a little bit, quickly extinguished, so not much was needed. And then we also responded to another cardiac arrest where the Lucas was deployed. I know you'd like to hear me utilize that piece of equipment, so that was a successful save, and that person was transported to the hospital for continued care. If you look through the training, you can see that one night, we spent some training on power fires, E D fires, we call it, for electric vehicles, and then part of that was deceiving our blanket M1 last April at FDIC. So that's kind of a nice thing to get. So that is now on 1572 and ready to respond. And then under personnel, Alan Anderson joined the department. He's our newest cadet. He's already been through CPR training, E D training, and as of last night, started medical first responder with the other two cadets. So we have three cadets.
Is he here?
He's not here.
Oh.
So we have three cadets that are in first responder school as of last night, so they are starting their full training. Any questions?
So we're fully staffed?
We're not fully staffed yet, but we're right where we want to be right now, and we are looking good. We have good people in place, we have three cadets, that's a handful, we can do it. And next summer, if everything goes to plan, we'll have three more full firefighters, and then it will be hardcore press to get two to three more for the next round.
Good.
But we are looking good.
Whether they stay here or not, it's important that we develop that talent to go other places. The other communities surrounding us are struggling with finding candidates just for being cadets, so it's a credit to you and your leadership, Steve. Thank you.
Good.
Any questions for the Chief? Keep up the good work, thank you. Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening. I like most of the hats that are out here, not all of them. I won't vote for any of you, Steve. September was a good month for us, too, 220 calls, it was down from all summer calls, but it's the first sign of a free personal call, if you have a contact problem as well. We had, we had an interesting in-service training for all our guys, so usually when you guys have training, is it ever really that fun? Usually not. So we had 12 hours of training that each day they go through, was at Camp Geneva, and the day that I went, it was 82 degrees out and water was 74. So we had a bunch of water rescues, and it was actually a depthless skills challenge. Some of them were greasy, who could do it the fastest, and I was trying to say that this late 40s guy beats the 21s. So I feel pretty good about that. Also, what's really cool is we just got two new cruisers, so we had to let go of the last couple days, getting those all filled up with all the stuff again, and the guys are pretty happy to hear of some of those hot and healthy. So other than that, we're doing pretty good. Any questions?
Cruisers are black?
Yeah, all of them are black.
Going to get a ride in the front seat?
We'll talk later.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
Dave, good evening.
So September is not, not in time, really, really quite much for us, but Safety Night is kind of the highlight in terms of events, so that's why I want to talk about it just a second. We did Safety Night a little bit differently this year, we made it bigger, took another role of the parking area. I discovered a little tool I was using to estimate space until I tried to nail it earlier ago. Those are overestimated things, so we have one improvement to do to, I mean, better use of space, we have to similar to space down at the end. But feedback I've gotten has generally been positive, that people like to spread out more and walk around and see some more things. My department did a little better showing, we actually had a tablecloth this time, instead of just a bare table out there. Tobin made something, something nice for us, so. And yeah, that's kind of one of the, we have a really quiet enough. Any questions?
Hearing none, thank you, Dave. Keep up the good work. Moving on to a fire truck purchase proposal, ask for the motion first, get it on the floor. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve City Manager Tyler Dotson and Fire Chief Steve Essenberg to sign a contract with Spencer Manufacturing for the purchase of a 2025 Spencer Fire Truck and associated equipment for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,022,733 contingent upon approval from the city attorney.
Second motion. So the move is supported, there was quite a bit of discussion at the last work session. I believe the Commission has a pretty good understanding of what we're doing here. Do you want to speak to this, Tyler, or does Steve?
I'll start off and then kick it to Steve. First off, definitely appreciate the City Commission's workshop discussion with regards to the opportunity presented before us tonight. Also want to give kudos to Chief Essenberg. From my arrival here roughly 20 months ago till now, this has been a conversation of how can we make this happen, how can we do it in a fiscally responsible way, with understanding that we need to meet the needs of the community in terms of having up-to-date, well-maintained equipment. Our equipment right now is well-maintained, but it is aging. In this case, in terms of Engine 1322, a 32-year-old vehicle. Over the past two years, Chief Essenberg has applied with a grant from FEMA, seeking financial assistance for the new, for the new vehicle, and while we knew it was a long shot, it's an opportunity that we took nonetheless, like we do with several other grant opportunities. Unfortunately, those were not able to come to fruition, but we did get some great experience with regards to working with federal grant programs, and that leads us here today. Chief Essenberg has done a fantastic job of working with primarily three manufacturers to get us to this point, and then recently, as you were made aware, two weeks ago to the night, the city was made aware of an opportunity with one of our vendors. So excited to at least speak to this tonight, and Chief, I'll leave the details up to you by all means.
Yeah, so I wrote a summary, and hopefully you'll have to read that, two pages of just kind of where we've been, where we've gone, and the opportunity that's in front of us, and it is really, in my estimation, is a great opportunity. As you can see in the notes, it's a 2025 truck, that means that the chassis will be produced in 2025. That's a good thing. That gets us ahead of the emission standard change of 2027, and it guarantees us a spot that we can get that, that particular engine and chassis package prior to the emission upgrade, which is prior to the price increase. And because they ordered it probably earlier this year, we need a couple of price increases. So there's an overall savings. The savings is probably right around $200,000 now, if not over. There's a lot of other things that would come into play if we waited and moved along. All of the vendors were saying we would be in that $1.2 to $1.3 million price range. This opportunity has been put us at just over a million. So my estimation is something that we had to improve, we had to work at. Over the past two weeks, since we last spoke, we have done a lot of work, not just me, all the guys. We went and looked at a neighboring department, Lincoln Township, that has a very similar truck. We looked at what we liked, what we didn't like. And I know what the big question is, what are we giving up? Absolutely nothing. This truck has exactly what we need. We have tailored this truck to what we want and what we need, and we are confident that we are getting what we need at an excellent price point. With that, I'll take any questions.
My only concern, Chief, is that there's always project and cost creep with these kind of large expenses, especially when it's being delivered at a future date. So my question is, are you confident that number is accurate, and do we need to make, do we need a buffer in there of some sort, just in case something comes up? I mean, is that enough?
So talking to Spencer Manufacturing, they are confident with their number. However, we have put $20,000 contingency in there for those unforeseen things, so if there's a vendor that they're not aware of that increases, is that enough? We don't know. They kind of look back at the past track record, and they said, when they do their estimations, that they are pretty close and accurate. So we feel comfortable.
My only issue is, if it goes beyond that, you're going to have to come back.
I thought I'd, right.
And...
Explain.
Explain.
Yep.
Do we, do we need to...
I would like to say that no, but I guess we'll have to keep that in our book. They gave me the assurance that I wouldn't have to, so that's where I, that's where I felt comfortable with the numbers.
Just a couple things to add, Chief. Chief mentioned the new federal emission standard. At the legislative dinner, we discussed this, and those standards are set to come to fruition in 2027.
Correct.
Why this is a big deal for this type of vehicles with these emission standards and the actual use of the equipment, it doesn't like to sit still. And with this being a first-generation technology, more or less, there could be maintenance issues with that down the line that are unforeseen. So it's kind of a seize-the-day moment right now to ensure that the equipment that we have is not only reliable, but it's able to be well-maintained based on current use patterns. Secondly, Andrew, Chief, and I have talked quite a bit over the past few months with regards to the financing here. The motion is generated in a way to allow Chief and I to engage into a contract to secure the vehicle based on the timeline from Spencer Manufacturing. We will come back at another time with regards to the financing. We can speak to any questions of those now, but we've only had a couple weeks to look at this. The highlights, though, is do we have the money available through our fiscal responsibility? Yes. Is financing an idea? It is. In running some light numbers with Andrew, our Finance Director, we believe that there's an opportunity to continue to invest money that we have using the market, which we've seen a great return on versus paying all up front. And so financially, there are a couple options that we have down the line. One thing to keep in mind is having enough capital available for our future, the future items within the strategic plan and anything of the unknown. But even with our 20% balance of maintaining a reserve for expenses, we are comfortable moving forward, and in this case, and Chief, we've said it all along, we just need a little help, and to the tune of $200,000, a little help is a ride. So a little bit additional background with what we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I was hoping you could speak a little bit about some of the features this truck has that helps us keep our higher insurance rating. I know that's a priority of yours, and it was helpful for me to hear that, but I think for any public here or on the airwaves, they'd love to hear that too.
Sure, absolutely. So when we had our last I S O survey rating, one of the areas that we were deficient in was pumping capacity. So they looked at all of your, all of our trucks, and they looked, they have a rated pumping capacity, and that's tested every year, and we were, we were short. So what can we do to bolster that? 1322 is rated at 1,250 gallons per minute. This truck is spec'd out to have a 2,000 gallon per minute pump. There again, we're bringing those numbers up, so when we go through our next round of that, we will have increased pumping capacity. Same amount of water on board, now we'll have foam, so that's, that's an increase, but now we have greater pumping capacity. Every little bit helps towards that.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the current truck will have to last us till when?
April or May of 2026.
And will the current truck meet our needs till then without being a money pit?
I am going to turn around and turn the door to Mark Northrup and forget it's a bad...
Mark?
Love it.
Okay. I just need to hear it. I want to be on record, that's all.
Are we on borrowed time? Yes. But have we, is it properly maintained, well-maintained? Yes. If anything happens, sure. It could. We're going to continue to take care of it, we're going to continue to nurse it along, and it starts, runs, and pumps. It's doing everything we've asked it to, and it has over the past 32 years. Going forward, good stewardship says it's time to replace it, and it is.
Now what about specialized training on the new truck, not just the pumping, but the mechanics of it, Mark?
We should go with that involved, the engine that we're getting in this truck, we're going to have a lower E P W dump charge this night. The valves that are going in this truck, the pump... The valves that are going in this truck, the pump, all related, is all training that I've had in the past, and it's pretty similar to all the other trucks I've had.
So, you don't need specialized training or equipment to maintain this?
No, there'll be some refreshment training on certain items on the truck. Now, I just look for myself, these gentlemen standing here, but I'm ready to talk to Steve on getting the upper speed on that type of stuff as well.
Any questions from the commissioners? Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll vote, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Even a Yankee fan can say yes.
Mayor Northrup.
No, I don't get the vote?
No, I said Mayor Northrup.
Oh, okay.
Are you voting?
Huh?
Are you voting?
Yes. The motion passes. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Mark. And good work on this, and I appreciate the love of detail. And I want to ride in the backseat. Moving on to the city treasury reports. Andrew?
All right. You had the report before you. Our reserve percentage is still at 60%, so we're doing good there of the main data 25%. We had a couple of securities that were called. They were purchased before I was here. But, so there's callable securities and non-callable securities. I invest in non-callable or bullet securities. So, that way then you're guaranteed that interest rate for the entire time versus a callable security. They offer a high interest rate, but then they're able to call it when interest rates go down. So, we, I try to stick with the bullet rates that are guaranteed for the life of the direction of the bond. So, that's why you'll see that one five and a half is in the red because it got called and taken from us. So, that's that. But we're still at an average of 4.88% across all our investments, so that's still really good, especially in this declining time.
Can you back up and read that number on the bottom, right?
Yes. We made $51,713.39 in interest last month, so still cranking out the interest, so that's really good for the city. It's like a $50,000 grant, dollar grant every month, right? Yeah, so, good interest rate still. We'll have that for probably about another year with how we're laddered with our approach. So, we'll keep that good interest rate even though the market's declining based on the two-year strategy that I put in place. But it also means it lags on the other end, so you know it all balances out in the end. But you know, it's nice for right now. And then, our debt schedule, we don't have any payments until January, when we have a payment to Mr. Jippen. And then, the two bonds are due February 1st, so those are coming up somewhat soon, not too soon. Don't want to rush the time. And then, in the grant spreadsheet, I think we talked about it last time, but Jill got a $10,000 grant for election supplies, so that was great. And then, the library had a private donation for $5,000. And then, we also got the M.TED-B grant for $209,000 for corporate drove and corporate exchange. And then, I think we briefly mentioned it last month, too. It wasn't on the spreadsheet, but Chief got that M.D. State of Michigan grant for turnout gear. So, the grants keep rolling in. And hopefully even more now with our new economic development tractor starting here soon. He can really focus on those and, you know, turn it up even more. So, yeah, that's what I have for you this month.
Any questions for the treasurer on the numbers? Easy crowd tonight, boys. Moving on to item number 11, then, payment of bills. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $613,018.50 to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support.
So, movement supported. Any questions on payment of bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Before we go on to the next one, we did get the 1.4 million that was paid to us. What?
We did. We'll see that in the next month because that closed on Friday, this past Friday, right? Or if they get in the right week here. It's been a blur the last couple of weeks. But, yeah, so we closed on that on Friday morning, so that got deposited in our bank Friday afternoon. And we'll see that on next month's report. So, that 60% fund balance is going to be even more come next month, so, yeah.
And we got the interest on them paying on those bonds for, what, six months?
Yes, sir. They paid approximately, yeah, it was just under 21,000. It was about 20,700-ish. Yeah, so, they paid their interest, so that was great, 5%. So, another good move there. We were able to recoup some of that money for the delay in closing.
So, that 1.4 is in the general fund balance now and is collecting checking account interest at, what, you said 5%?
It's at 5.1% right now for the next couple of months. So, with West Michigan Community Bank, we lock in an interest rate for three to six months at a time. So, we're currently at 5.1%. So, when that inevitably goes down the next time we lock in a new rate, then we'll look at other investment options. But for the next two months, we'll leave it there to keep the 5.1%, and then we'll look around to see where to put that after that.
Good. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion on ACH funds distribution.
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $425,048.14, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support.
So, movement supported. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to Department of Public Works, item 13, the East Van Buren Lift Station Pump Replacement. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of one flight model 3153 lift pump per quotation number 0059532 in the amount of $27,989.
Second.
So, movement supported. Do you want to brief us on that at all, Bob, or?
Absolutely.
I know you like spending money.
I do. Thank you, Jeremy, for jumping all over that motion. This is exciting major infrastructure. We just had a pump fail catastrophically at East Van Buren. We have a backup pump that's in place. It's running right now. Our diesel pump is on site and standby right now, but the consequence of failure of the second pump would be horrible. So, I'm just trying to get this one rolling as fast as I can. Pumps are 27 years old. Better than they're right now. They've been running reliably, each of them with one rebuild to this point, but industry standard, the best I can look is between seven and 15 years. So, we're already pushing the age on both the original pump and on the rebuilds. So, this pump right here, I recommend replacing, first rebuilding, the second time, just because you tend to get one good rebuild. And after that, it's kind of just cross your fingers and hope for the best. The other pump that's in there right now was replaced in 2021, so it makes good sense that we have a couple more years out of this one. It's time for a replacement.
Any questions? I got two. When? And what is the effort to install? What does that look like? Is there a disruption when we install it?
There should be no disruption in service right now. It's, the station is designed and constructed to have two pumps running. They take turns, basically. They run opposite to one another, and one goes down, one takes over. But it's set up, it's a rail system, pump slides down, it pops right in where it needs to go. And as soon as we flip the switch on, basically plug it in, it's back in service. Lead time is 16 weeks, but I, between me and all you guys, those are generic numbers. Everybody just says everything is going to take forever, and our experience has been things are getting delivered a lot faster than they tell us they're going to. So, I would plan for 16 weeks, but I would expect it sooner than reality. And I'm confident with the way the station's running right now, too. I mean, we have one good existing electrical pump in there right now that's been running 90/90% of the time since the other one's been out. And we have a diesel pump that's hooked up and on standby, and everybody's trained to run up there and flip the switch if they need to.
You're the engineer, Jeremy. No questions?
I think Bob and I talked about this a little bit two weeks ago. I had noticed the diesel pump out there and just asked what was going on, so I got clued in a little bit already.
He could tell right away he knew something was wrong.
Any questions, discussion from the dais? There's an open motion. I'll call for a roll call.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to the zoning map amendment. NC, which is commercial, to HDR, which is high-density residential, B. Let's get the motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-335 to amend figure 2.02.01 zoning map for the city of Hudsonville in accordance with section 7.01.01A from the zoning ordinance of the city of Hudsonville to rezone 6365 Balsam Drive from NC Neighborhood Commercial to HDR-B, High Density Residential-B.
Second motion.
Movement supported. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission to make this recommendation to the city commission. It was a split vote in the planning commission, and I have spoken to all the commissioners here individually on some of the challenges that we have with rezoning this and the issues if we don't rezone it. Having said that, I will let the city manager maybe talk to some of those details and get his recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission did a phenomenal job of discussing this issue. In terms of procedures, the city's future land use map needed to be amended before the zoning would take place. So, the planning commission went through the public hearing with regards to the master plan amendment. And then, the recommendation before you from the planning commission is to rezone from Neighborhood Commercial NC to HDRB, High Density Residential. The property's been vacant for roughly 25 years, and the property for the folks in the audience is located directly behind signatures on Balsam Drive. With the housing demand being what it is, the city was approached by the property owner to discuss and move this forward. In part with the housing need, and then equally, the land has been vacant for 25 years. Neighborhood Commercial really requires more frontage than what the parcel currently offers right now. And what I mean by that is there's a driveway, basically, of space. So, when you think of commercial activity, generally speaking, it may make sense that it hasn't been developed. Considerations here are, we do have a developer that is interested with a proven development. The gentleman also owns a complex, a high-density complex in the city limits right now. So, economies of scale can be realized, and we, we're not talking about a new developer or someone who's new to residential housing, but someone with experience. The type of residential dwelling that could potentially occupy this space is, still need to be discussed. The developer can change. This simply allows for the rezone. I've met with the developer as well as staff on, you know, what are the considerations that go in there, and it's very much preliminary. But there are several options that the developer has. It is a unique site in terms of the layout as relates to the zoning code within HDRB, such as setbacks, sidewalks, the height of the building, the stories of, the stories, amount of stories in the building. Right now, one building, 12 units is the maximum that's allowed within our highest density. So, we have a lot of process to go through here to work with the developer. The planning commission will be directly involved. Developer may choose to seek a planned unit development route on that, in which the planning commission will apply the principles of the code as it relates to a planned unit development, or even zoned by right, HDRB if so approved. So, this is early on in the process, but what this does is allow the developer to move forward, potential bringing high-density housing to the city. With that being said, if there's any questions, comments, concerns, I can field those at this time.
Well, the master plan is being reworked. Are we confident that they will be supportive in how we choose to rezone it at this time?
Yeah, with the discussion of the planning commission, Mr. Mayor, and then looking with staff, again, we are maybe just right around halfway through with the master planning process. This is logical. There's high-density to the north, which is Georgetown Township, and their highest level of density is to the north. It provides clustering of sorts with that. We're not putting high-density in the middle of an industrial park by any means. And with the lack of use over the last 25 years, the need of housing demand, in my professional opinion, it is logical for housing to be there. It would fit the scope of the community, the needs of the community. And I do believe that the new master plan would yield as such in terms of zoning for residential.
Any questions or discussion from the commissioners? Does everybody feel comfortable with what's being proposed here, what we're discussing, and some of the technical issues? The political issues with the residents additionally? Hearing none, I will call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
No. Motion carries. Best wishes to Dan and the planning commission on moving forward on this rezone. And please keep us advised. I know there's going to be a lot of work at the planning commission on this. So, thank you for all your efforts, and so, there's going to be a long road in front of us on this one. I'm confident. So, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which would be the city manager's report. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to get to this as quickly as possible. We have a lot of exciting things taking place in the city right now. As Andrew mentioned, the city was awarded, two weeks ago, a M.D. Category B Ted F grant for 209,000. It's a matching grant for roadwork to be done on Corporate Road Drive and Corporate Exchange. We've worked with our friends over there, Royal Technologies and some of the other businesses that had concerns about the roads. When Bob Miller and I were looking at the major streets and the local street funds, and how do we do this based on other priorities? It was a tough one to try to squeeze in. So, needless to say, this is a big win for the city of Hudsonville, a big win for our employers, our, the semi-truck drivers out that way. The funding was available as of October 1st. The project will undergo design engineering and look to be constructed sometime during 2025. We're very early on in the process. The Berry Street alignment, we had a site, a progress meeting, excuse me, last week. The project's on schedule. The culvert and the wing walls have been installed. If you haven't had an opportunity, go check that out. It's, I call it Marvel Engineering, Jeremy. You might disagree. It's a cool project. I've been over there several times. I know we've all exchanged some pictures. The asphalt will look to be laid near the end of October, depending on weather. We're working with the property owner of the north, the city previously engaged with, with regards to the landscaping, conveyance of property, maintenance, et cetera. But all signs are good as it relates to the Berry Street realignment. The Buttermilk Creek bathrooms and parking lot project is ahead of schedule, but will not reach substantial completion like I had hoped for early this month. There was an issue with the transportation of the doors, and the doors that were received were turned back by the contractor because they were damaged. And because of color of the doors, burgundy in this case, we're looking at a six-week lead time. So, we'll look to have the bathroom doors for the Buttermilk Creek bathrooms installed either later this month, early in November, with the planned ribbon cutting in the spring, once things are able to grow in and the landscaping's good. But again, if you haven't checked that out, it's a well-constructed facility. It's beautiful and a great addition to our park system. We hit it on already, but I need to say this one out loud. Congratulations to everybody who had their hand in in selling the Farmers Co-op property. Co-op property to Benecloes and Development. If you haven't seen, yesterday afternoon, a work trailer was brought on site. The developer's excited to get going. This isn't the end of the project by any means. It's just the start of another phase in terms of construction. He's been in touch with staff with regarding permitting, as well as working with Bob Miller and myself on, on utilities. So we're excited to get that kicked off, and final completion is slated for roughly two years, all said and done. The last, we talked to the developer. The hope is to construct the five thousand, forty-seven hundred square foot commercial building that will front School Ave first, and the development behind it, of course, that's subject to change. But congratulations to everyone, and really appreciate the hundreds of hours that, that staff has put towards in making this possible. The city held a groundbreaking, groundbreaking, excuse me, for Prospect Flax on the corner of Thirty-second Ave and Prospect Street a couple weeks ago. The forty-one unit development will look to be completed by the fall of twenty-twenty-five. Finance Director Andrew Smith and I, as well as DPW Superintendent Bob Miller, attended a presentation put forth by the city of Wyoming's Water Department last week. This included discussions with regards to the future capital improvement plans, rate structures, agreements, and concluded with a tour of the plant. It is fascinating technology. I don't understand it all. One thing I can say, it is a very clean plant, and it's staffed with several dedicated professionals. Overall, it is a solid of an operation in terms of water plant, as I've seen, and one that benefits tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of folks in West Michigan communities, ensuring that we get clean, clean water. I have three, three items left. Just a reminder that Urban Hay Day is this Saturday from ten AM to three PM. Staff has done a great job preparing for the event, and we look forward for another great one. Mike from the facilities teams worked with Lindsay, the chamber and the city's marketing director. We have a lot of volunteers and chamber events roped into this, so by all means, be sure to check out Urban Hay Day this Saturday. The city's new economic development director, Jacob Bagard, will start on October twenty-first. Can't underscore this enough. It is a big win for the city, and I appreciate the city commission allowing this opportunity to take place. And it's a big win because as we utilize smart growth principles to ensure future growth into a strong and well-functioning twenty-first century community, it couldn't come at a better time in terms of downtown development, seeking out grants, working with developers, using the tools in the economic tool belt, such as PA two-ten, Mista Tiff capture, brownfield redevelopment, and, and a few other incentives, and really give us a champion and a point person on these projects as we look to install the future Villa Greens and make sure we're building the correct, right, and smart developments in the community's future. And finally, I have, I have good news as well. It's a good news day. There is, as of right now, today, in this moment, there's no need for a workshop at the end of this month.
Any update on the Ottawa County water pipe bonding?
Ottawa County has figured, or Ottawa County, Pastor Stevich at the county, has figured out what he needs on his end. The project has been, bids were opened. I believe the project was recorded, so we're not missing anything with the timeline there with regards to the third transmission main. Andrew, second or third transmission main?
Third.
Third transmission main, thank you. So everything appears to be good. We'll probably have some information coming forth for you in the next month or so.
And we're still confident we can cover that out of the water enterprise funding?
Sure. Just a reminder for the folks in the crowd that the city's, rather than choosing to bond out for our portion of the project, which is between two and three percent, we are going to use some fund balance reserves. This will help keep rates on our end in check as it relates to this project, but allows us to save roughly six hundred thousand dollars, if not more, of customer dollars over a twenty-year period. Six hundred thousand is conservative. Finance Director Andrew Smith seems to think that it would be more than that. So through some smart and at times against-the-grain ideology of the city's approach here, we're saving our customers several hundred thousands of dollars. So Andrew, I applaud you in your efforts here, and I think that this mechanism that we're using is a big win for our customers in the city of Hudsonville.
Are we seeing the other communities falling in line with that philosophy to spend enterprise funds instead of bonding?
I think a lot of people wish that they were in the position that we are in, that they're able to pay. I know both Jamestown and Georgetown have reached out and asked questions about paying cash versus that. Jamestown's looking to institute savings programs so they can pay cash in the future. And Georgetown, they also were very interested in paying cash. I don't know their financial position or not, but, but they were also very interested. And Park Township as well came out and talked to us about paying cash and how they, they could do that themselves. So I think they're realizing, you know, with bond costs, interest costs, everything, while we're making a good interest rate right now, we're not guaranteed that for the next twenty years, whereas you're guaranteed to be paying a four percent interest rate for twenty years. So, you know, a lot of people are realizing that paying cash.
That all gets rolled back to the, the water user.
Exactly. And so, so this way, we're saving their estimate of forty-three cent per thousand gallon increase with this bond. So, so, yeah, we're not forced into that for our customers.
Anything else?
That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Going down the dais, Dave. Yankees, I never figured you.
It happens to the best of us. I had the chance to participate with my family in Safety Night. Just wanted to say thank you to all of you that helped make that possible. My kids love it, and it's great growing up in a community where they get to engage with people that make their community safe and beneficial for everybody. So thank you. I appreciate it.
I also had the opportunity to participate in Safety Night. My two-year-old absolutely loved it, so thank you guys for putting that on. And, yeah, really, really happy we have the opportunity to get a new fire truck, because after climbing in, a couple of those, it was a stark difference between a brand-new one that Jamestown has and, and the one we have. So looking forward to that.
Counselor? Larry?
Two things I have to be careful. I remember when we received that truck that we're replacing. Anyway, thank you, Andrew, and Tyler, for this work on this bonding. And I think you've gotten innovative on it, and we're going to save some money. You got the attention of other communities, so I applaud you both for that.
Thank you.
Good job, Steve. That's just a real big win. Pretty awesome. When Andrew presents the interest on our investments, I'm just reminded of a couple years ago, a big difference.
How quickly the pendulum swung.
Yeah, and not, not just that, but Andrew's methodology and attention to detail and making sure to maximize the city's finances for the benefit of the city is a, is a real boon. And then I'd like to have, next month, we should put some motion in place so that a New York cat can never be on this dais again.
Andrew, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Jill?
I'd like to thank Jack for, he was there when I signed the paperwork on the title. His wealth and depth of experience, it was just nice to have a wingman there that day when, with you there, Jack. I appreciate you coming in, about a day off to see me sign a bunch of papers. I appreciate the attention to detail by you and all the staff. So, and the, and Counselor, thank you for your due diligence and looking over that paperwork. And it was nice to get that check, those checks, so thank you all. And I know, Larry, you were really particular about the developer adding up to pay some of that interest, and to see that additional check for nearly twenty-one thousand was satisfying. So I think we, we did right by the community by doing that.
Anything else from the audience? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion's been made. We don't need to make the motion according to my expert here. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.